Hi, everyone. We're going to open the meeting from the peace stance of pleasured allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the September 8th, 2025, meeting of the zoning board of appeals, or ZBA. First, let me introduce all the members present here this evening, myself, Chairman Alan Donnelly, our vice chairman, Mr. Carl Hinger, our secretary, Mr. Elijah Healy, regular member commissioner, Mr. Larry Rushmeyer, alternate member commissioner, Mr. Liam Annea, regular member commissioner, Mr. Richard Briggs, alternate member commissioner, Mr. Michael Barnes, and our newest alternate member commissioner, Mr. Douglas Clemens. As always, our excellent zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Fran Molly is here, and our fabulous recording secretary, Ms. Cassandra Varian, is here. The current agenda can be found here at the table or on the town website under Board Meetings. When we begin the public hearing, I will call each applicant one at a time. When I call the property address, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail. After, the secretary will read into the record any communications we've received in favor or opposed to the application. The chair will then entertain questions of clarification from board members concerning the application. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each side of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. After we have gone through all the cases on the agenda tonight, we will close the public portion of this meeting and will deliberate an open executive session. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. The final decision may be in the form of approved as submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. All questions and comments must be directed through the chair. Please be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application. In view of time constraints placed upon us, we ask your indulgence in not reiterating comments previously presented. You are welcome to stay until the end of the meeting or contact the land use office in the morning. Thank you. Okay, first thing on the agenda is a review of the August 4th, 2025 minutes. I'd like to take a motion to approve the minutes, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I have very, very little.
Line sixty-six.
Line sixty-six. It says Chairman Donnelly-Hinger seconded the motion which carried unanimously. Could we please strike "Hinger"? No offense. All right.
I knew your guys were close.
That's right. So I need to make a motion to amend the minutes, right?
Yeah.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Continue public hearings, there are none. Public hearings, there are none.
For Robert's rules, before you move, you have to have a discussion.
Oh, for discussion?
Before, yeah, before you move, you have to have a discussion.
Thank you very much. I can back up. Want me to back up?
Yeah.
All right, let's go back. Okay, I'd like to take a motion to approve the amended minutes, right?
Yeah, we had that. The motion in the second row of the table, so discussion.
Is there any discussion? Thank you, sir. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, continue public hearings, none. Public hearings, none. Old business, none. New business. Our first application is application Z-25-49. That is Mr. Robert Cahoon residence, Caitlin Hill. And this is sixty-one South Lakeshore Drive, Brookville, Connecticut. The required dimension is, uh, let me just wait. Yeah, proposed activity is remove and build a new deck with revised site location, same location, stair location.
Stair, correct.
Sorry, I'm reading now. Stair location. Required dimension is ten feet. Proposed dimension is six feet. Variance requested is four feet, and that is zoning regulation three dot five. If the apps can please come forward and state your name and address for the record and tell us about your appeal in detail, sir.
My name is Robert Cahoon. My address is sixty-one South Lakeshore Drive. And the reason for this variance is we are replacing our deck because it's starting to rot, and it's not going to survive another winter. So when we set up to replace it, we realized that the stairs would work much better in the location that I'm requesting. And then when we had a couple people come out to take a look at it, they pretty much said it might be the only spot it can go because where it is right now apparently is not up to code, and it cannot be put in the front either because of the sewer, not sewer, the septic lines. So it cannot go there as well. So I'm requesting a variance, so we'll put it on the side of the deck, which makes it, which jets it out approximately two feet more than where the current end step is right now, where the one we're going to remove.
Yes, sir.
So I guess technically, I don't know if a variance was ever put in for the first one, but it didn't make the ten feet to begin with. But now I'm just requesting to go closer in order to get this done.
Thank you. I forgot to say welcome to the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you. For the record, this is very weird to me. I spent twelve years on the People's Court. I was a line producer for the television show. So literally, I've never been on this part of the podium. I'm busy talking to the judge on the other side.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Secretary, do we have any correspondence, sir?
No, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's any commissioners that have any questions for the applicant. I have a few. I'll go last.
I also have copies, by the way, because according to the rules that you ask for a copy of everything, so if you want, let me know. I can get them too.
I have a question. Do you, did you manage to speak to your neighbor on that side of the?
Jim Cullen, yes. Jim and I get along great, and he was the first person I talked to even before I had this idea. And he was fully, fully approved. He had no problem at all with it. We got, there's a pretty decent garden bed in between us. And it's technically where the line ends is where the garden bed really begins. So it's like his garden, but we're maintaining it.
I was there.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, so we have a great relation with him, and he's totally for it.
Mr. Chair, may I have your seat for one second?
Yes, you're right.
The neighbors were in today, and they did review the plans. And she did have no problem with it. She said that she was going to be present tonight, but obviously she's not here.
Thank you very much. We'll note that for the record.
Definitely.
And what's their names again? This Jan M. Edwards?
No, that was former, that's an older survey. It's Jim and Eileen Cullen.
She just moved to the house, I think.
It was about three years.
Yeah.
Very nice lady.
Yeah, she's great. She's great.
She was walking.
She watched our cats while we were away.
The sewer line you're saying comes out, is there a septic field?
It's a septic field, yes.
So the fields and the tank are in front of the house?
The tank's on the side, but the line runs across the front of the grass area in front of the house. So the line runs directly across. If you were to enter the house, it's the left side of the house, the septic tank will be on the right side where the asphalt was. You said you were there. That's where the tank is. Then they run the line all the way across.
And your contractors are telling you you can't put a set of stairs down on to that area?
No, I think it was the health, the board of health, it said that. Because it doesn't, it's not enough space.
There's not enough setback?
Correct.
I just have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
And I'll ask you one question, and then I'll have you come up and take a look at the map, I trust. And thank you very much for allowing me to go up to your property and look at it.
Oh, there's no problem.
I know you said in the beginning, but could you just go over your exact hardships in detail on the property, the hardships?
Do you mean like, so I'm not exactly sure what you mean when defining hardships?
Well, hardships are of the land, something, the reason why you have to do it this way.
Okay, so the rear, the way the original deck is, it's basically to a point where the stairs were built in the rear of it. The steps are connecting to the house.
With the help of, if I pulled it up?
Yeah.
I think I got you on Google Earth. Let me, oh, that should be your house. Let's see.
That's my house. That's a very old version of it.
The stairs, if you tell me where to go on the cursor, somewhere sort of kind of right there?
Yeah, do you see where that evergreen tree is? That's coming down, because that's really right where the stairs are going to be.
Okay, roughly where I have the cursor?
Correct.
Okay, please continue, sir.
So, yeah, it's hard to see in that picture, but the stairs are in the rear of the deck right now, and they're connecting to the house. So even if we were to put new stairs in that spot, we were told that we can't do that because it's still code violation because it's connecting to the house. And I already mentioned why the front is the septic line. You can see the hill. You see the flat part of the hill right in front of the garden area. That line runs like right up there.
Okay, and then kind of goes over that way, and the tank is back over there somewhere.
Correct. Not to mention, if you put stairs there, they have to be monstrous stairs, if you see the height, because you can see the hill that goes from there, so that's a priority.
It's probably like five feet?
Yeah.
That's pretty tall.
Yeah. So it works better on that side where you have the cursor right now.
Okay. Thank you. Would you mind coming through real quick and just double check a couple things off now? Here's my question for you. So I went out to the house and looked at it. Right down the line, you got tons of shrubs and trees and stuff like that, but the big old cedar tree.
Which is gone.
Yeah, that one's gone?
Yep.
Okay, so the stairs come down now off the deck?
Down that way?
Yeah, there's like a little landing, goes this way, and then it heads kind of south, southeast, right?
Correct.
Would it be possible, and you can explain to me why, but would it be possible to just have it come straight down? I know you have a little window there, you know, like those little basement windows I saw there? But instead of angling this here, coming straight down, and I did the calculations, by the way, this map you gave us is not the scale. I racked my brains with Fran for about twenty minutes with the architect we were in.
The CCA said it was eighteen by twenty-four. This is not eighteen by twenty-four.
Yeah, this one to twenty, it's not the scale according to rule, but it's okay. But I did some rough measurements over here. And if you brought them down there, even if they were eighty-eight width, thirty-six inches, and then you gave a few inches on the other side because you got two-by-fours, the handrail going down and stuff. I calculated that even if you did that, you still had at least, you'd have a little over ten feet. So you wouldn't need a variance at all, and I'm talking from this board. You can't use the rule on this because this is not the scale. And you'd have a little over ten feet if you just brought them down straight rather than taking them and curving them the way they are now.
Right.
Is that a possibility?
It's not, and the reason why is it still has to connect to the house, and that was one of the issues we had. That's why it's not supposed to, one side of the house. It would still connect to that edge, and apparently that, I was told that that's a code violation anyway.
Fran, if you brought them straight down there and you had ten foot, one or two inches, you wouldn't need a variance, would you? You'd came straight down?
It's a building code violation. I wouldn't answer that question.
Okay, so we're not sure of the building code, all right. All right, thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much. But everything else looks pretty accurate on the map, I'm sure, right?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Do any other commissioners have any questions or follow-up questions for the applicant?
I have a question, and hopefully you can help me understand this. So you're saying that there's a building code that prevents you from attaching a staircase to the house?
That's what I was told by my, by my contractor. Because he apparently met with somebody out there, and then that's what he was told as well. He said they couldn't go down there. I can try and get in touch with him if that helps, but...
Yeah, I would have to, I would really have to talk to the building department. But for some reason, I just, I'm not, I'm not clear enough on. Because if we turn the staircase and come down that way, you don't need a variance at all.
My other, I'm sorry, I have one other question though. You mentioned it goes down ten feet. Does that cover my window then too down there?
No, ten feet from the border. So what I did is I measured with a tape measure over there, and then I used this, although you can't use a scale on it, I'm just going by the numbers they have if they're accurate.
Right.
So if you went straight over, you have your deck, you got that little kind of step downward. It's almost like a landing, a little landing before you turn to the right. If you went straight off of that rather than hanging a right, which is towards the south, southeast side, if you went straight down on that, I honestly, with the width that's there and at least the calculations that I did, I don't even think it's got to be attached to the house. Because you got thirty-six inches, right? And then you got two-by-fours hand railings. I think it could go straight down there and not even have that attached to the house.
I really think the building department did have an issue with it because I know this was an option that I did mention to the contractor when we had, when we thought initially that the variance may not get approved because...
There might be some building code that doesn't allow to be a step out the door onto the staircase. You may require a landing, and then the stairs coming out the door.
And that's going to jet it out even further then if we did that. And then that will cover the window if we put a landing there.
You mean down at the bottom of it?
No, I think you, are you talking about the landing?
So if you're, if you're coming out of the door of the house, and the immediate thing is a step as you come out the door, that might be a building code violation. You may need a landing when you step out the door, and then the staircase leads you there. But that's only three feet, four-foot landing, and then the stairs become downstairs.
Well, that's what I said, there kind of is a landing there. You know when you come off the deck on the south side of the house, I call it?
There's a landing or two steps.
Yeah, about two steps down, there's a landing there. I don't know the width, maybe it was three feet.
I said about, yeah, thirty-six by thirty-six.
And then it takes a right, which is heading south. But instead of taking a right, you already got that landing there, just continue the stairs going down. And yeah, the window, it's back, it's jotted back a little bit. You know, the stairs might be in front, but they're not right up against or anything. They're out several inches.
Also, to be honest, I would really still like to prevent that, for that reason, but you did just put a brand-new garden in there, and it is on a slope too, so we would have to dig it out and even it out as well. So I would really appreciate if we can somehow come together with the variance. It just makes it easier, plus it'll make it easier moving furniture in and out. If you put it on the side of the house, getting through the glass doors is still going to be a pain in the ass because you're going up this way and you're turning right. That's what I've been doing with the deck furniture each time, trying to get it down, going around with things. I just don't want to toss it over the deck. But if it's a straight shoot down, it just makes it so much easier for us.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
Is that window an egress window?
Yes, it is. It is an egress.
So you can't cover it for that reason?
That's an egress window?
Yeah.
Okay, it looked pretty small.
Yeah, it's small, but it's still an egress. You can still get, it still opens up as an escape if you needed it.
So the egress window means a firefighter can go through the window with a pack on? That's egress.
With a pack?
With a pack, a tank.
How tall would you say that window is, sort of thing?
I have to...
When I was looking at it, it was whatever that is, eighteen inches.
I don't, maybe twenty-four. So twenty-four, so twenty-four is not an egress. I was only impressed into twenty-four. It was, so...
It's not an egress.
So maybe it's not?
Any follow-up on that? Any other comments, any follow-up on that?
Who would determine whether the egress would be there fired or not, or is it just?
It would have to be fired on it now, yeah.
No, the building department. Yeah, the building department. Fran, would you mind if I asked you a question? Do you happen to know the egress on windows? What commissioner?
Three-two by four-six, about four-six, three-two by one?
They got a pack on?
That sounds right.
Then that's, then it's definitely not an egress.
Okay, so it's not an egress. Final question, sir. Would it be fair to say, and I don't want to put any words in there, but would it be fair to say if there wasn't a building code issue about the attaching part of it, it's a possibility to go straight versus jogging to the right if there wasn't a building code violation?
It's a possibility. I mean, it's not what I prefer, but if it is what it is, then we will abide by it.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Any further questions? Any other commissioners? Oh, you found it?
We found the egress size.
The egress. Might as well read it into the record. Yeah, I see them there. Minimum clear opening, five foot seven square. Below grade windows, five foot square, or five square feet. So minimum height, twenty-four inches, minimum width, twenty inches. That's what it looks like to me.
That's what I'm reading.
That's, when you said twenty-four by twenty?
It says twenty-four by twenty.
Minimum.
Minimum.
Okay, but then that window could be twenty-four by twenty.
It definitely could be twenty-four by twenty.
Well, what is this?
Yeah, kind of feels a little different.
They could put the stairs there, and that could be a reason why they said you can't put stairs down there. That's going to block the window.
I don't think it's too big.
If that's the sticking point, we should probably get the information directly from the
Building Department?
Building Department rather than relying on a Google search, or and, or no disrespect to Fran, but Fran's what he believes. We should probably ask them directly. If that is the sticking point for some people on whether we approve or disapprove, we should get a firm answer.
You want to keep the public hearing open?
If it's a sticking point for people.
And then just have a discussion, and then we can always, okay?
Yeah, if that is, like I said, if that is a sticking point for people, I think it's worth having.
Talk about that in the public hearing, talk about that, and if we need to see more, but we can. All right, at this time, I'm going to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application.
Me, I don't have any. I'm at fifty-nine South Lakeshore Drive.
Please state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Lynn Shortis. I am right now in surrogates court. My brother Walter Lang owned the house next door, and I'm in favor of his petition.
Thank you.
I have nothing against my neighbor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like him to have his petition. He's been a very nice guy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I'd like him to have his petition.
Sandra, were you able to get her name?
Yeah.
Sir, anything?
It's my husband.
Welcome to the zoning board of appeals, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none. Sir, you have the final concluding remarks. Anything you'd like to say?
Basically, thank you for your time, and I'm hoping you approve.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any last second questions, follow-ups, and for the closing of the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, do you want to close the public hearing? We'll keep it open.
Continuing it?
This way we can get more information for the next meeting.
Larry, so we can always close the public hearing, talk about it in discussion, and see more info.
Wait, until we get that information if the public hearing is closed?
Close, you can't.
Can't.
For zoning, you can't. Once public hearing is closed, that's if you close the public session.
I'd like to have that info. Is anybody opposed to continuing the public hearing so we can get that info?
It doesn't change my view on the matter, so I'm content with foregoing, delaying this month. But if other people want to continue it, that's fine by me.
I'm fine with making a decision now.
Yeah, I'm content with making the decision tonight.
Then let's close the public hearing.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to take a motion to close the hearing, the public hearing on Z-25-49. That's Robert Cahoon residence. Take a motion to close it. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you have to discuss. You have to discuss the motion.
Any discussion? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the public hearing is closed. All right, we're moving on to our next application. Hey Fran, quick question. I don't think we have to agree with that, we can just take a motion and...
Continue the meeting.
And I won't forget to say any discussion.
Don't tell me. If I were forced things, I'd make sure that I...
By goof, I want somebody that told me, make sure you... All right. Thank you for your time. I'd like to take a motion to continue the public hearing on Z-25-44. That is Brian Lindquist residence, twenty-four Mistow Road. And this is, I'm not even sure how to read this, but I'd like to take a motion to continue the public hearing to the next meeting, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No discussion?
Did you want to just discuss that they asked for the continued steps?
Yeah, we could. So everybody, I'm sure everybody read their paperwork and did their homework, but there was a correspondence with Amy from Mr. Lindquist on August nineteen, twenty twenty-five, at three twenty-six P.M. I requested, and formally request an extension. I'm not a lawyer nor any form of licensed attorney nor a contractor. I have no experience with this or knowledge of how to do this. I need an extension, please.
I just said they wanted an extension.
All right, all those in favor of continuing Z-25-44 to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that is continued. All right, he didn't stay around, huh? All right. Well, this is what I was going to say, sir. What we're going to do now is we're going to go into close deliberations. You're welcome to stick around. All right, so I'd like to take a motion. First number one, thank you. I'd like to take a motion to approve application Z-25-49. That's Robert Cahoon residence slash Caitlin Hill, sixty-one South Lakeshore Drive, Brookville, Connecticut. Required dimension is ten feet, proposed dimension is six feet. Variance requested is four feet, and that is zoning regulation three dot five. And that is to move and rebuild a deck, named deck with a revision of the stair location. I'd like to take a motion to approve that, so please.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? That one I wouldn't have forgot. Who would like to go? Commissioner Rushmeyer, would you like to go first, Mr.?
I know the property is in the lakes. Every time we look at property in the lakes, there's always property line restrictions because the lots are so tight. So from that perspective, I'm very inclined to give some sort of variance. I have some questions about if he's already in violation. I don't think we can make that violation worse, though.
I did, not to interrupt, I did look into that while we were discussing it. And it's specifically the section on non-conforming structures specifies that the, where is it the?
Straighten and restore, replace, tell me.
Yeah, there's a section on replacement. Any non-conforming structure or building can be strengthened, restored, or replaced. No portion of an existing building or structure that is non-conforming shall have the portion of the structure within the setback roof, enclosed, extended, expanded, or altered in any vertical or horizontal direction. It then goes on to say in section F that existing entry steps and/or platforms are not considered an expansion, extension, or alteration. So the stairs on the deck, I don't believe are considered an expansion.
So he's not improving a pre-existing non-conforming?
He's, right.
Technically not.
He's technically, well, he's replacing it. He's replacing it, but the stairs do not count from my reading.
The code is saying that the stairs to that.
Yeah, that expanding...
Non-conforming...
That you can't expand the deck further, but technically, I believe from my reading of it, you can expand the stairs technically further into the, or into the setback.
The other part of that conversation is there is a viable solution and not have to have a variance at all. But I could go either way. I'll listen to the board, and I could go either way.
Yeah, I could go absolutely either way on this. He definitely has enough room to go straight down it. I am a little worried. I don't think that's, there's no way that's twenty-four inches tall, that window. Not only that, but it's like five feet down from where the window, it's like a small basement window. It's maybe it's eighteen inches. But I could go either way on this one. I wish I knew the answer to that. Makes sense that you got to have at least that. Fireman's got to crawl through there with a tank.
Yeah, I don't know if we're using egress versus fire egress. There are probably two different things in coding. And I'm not versing it, but I do know that a twenty-four inch window isn't going to take a fireman with a pack.
That's tough.
Does that still, if he did build the stairs that way, does that still get into the issue that he was saying his contractor was talking about the stairs touching the house?
That makes no sense whatsoever.
No, I don't think so at all, because when I read it, and his plans are a little odd here because these not the scales, otherwise I'd pull up the rule and I'm sure you. But he had enough room, even leaving a good leeway for a railing going down. I don't even believe it's got to be attached to the house, definitely not on the right or the south side or on the north side. I think there's room there. But they would be coming down kind of in front of that window, that's my only...
In straight-up logic, we do stoops on the front of the house. You do a, comes right up to the front door.
It goes right up.
And the back door is the same thing. So that sounds like a contractor BS story.
I think it could go straight down, no problem at all, but I could go, I could go either way on this. I'd like to, I'd like to hear what everybody else says.
Just as an aside, you know why the... Just as an aside, you know why the measurements don't work, right? Because you blew up the map.
They blew it up?
Looks a lot bigger than listed size.
Oh, no, they were giving me a full-scale map. I asked for a full-scale.
You have the same key that we have. That's what he was saying.
Oh, yeah, I spent twenty minutes on this time, like something's wrong, and I had to grab Fran. He's like, wait, this thing's not the scale. It was driving me nuts.
You gotta use the size map they provide.
I'm over here, I'm doing the math, and it's like, this isn't working out.
I don't blame you, I had to use my phone to magnify it, so I actually see the deck.
I just ended up looking at it online.
We're supposed to have, right? We're supposed to have.
Alan wants full-size.
No.
That's what Alan got.
Technically, I think they're supposed to give us this. Yeah, I can't read that little stuff.
Those checking measurements.
Yeah, there's definitely no problem with his septic. I talked to the sanitarian, and drew the septic system in here. I'm talking with the stairs. Yeah, maybe if he went forward on them, but not backward, he must put them so. If he did go straight down with them, there's no septic issue there. I'm not seeing his hardship.
He doesn't have any hardship.
Yeah.
No matter how you look at it, he has no hardship.
Other than pre-existing non-conforming upzone because it's in the shore.
Well, shiny off zone, it's seven thousand. Well, that's what he has.
He's right, it's, oh, yeah, he's right there.
Zoning of.
Barely on this, right on the board.
Yeah, so it's not upzone. You could say it's a very cramped lot, and the shape of it, you could say, makes it difficult to put it, like the house itself is basically at the setback line. So, you could say that the rectangular shape of the property makes it difficult to put anything on the side.
It's kinda weird, a huge deck in the front of your house anyhow, but I get it, it's looking at the lake.
Right.
Well, my thinking about it is that since we chose not to continue the application during which we could determine for certain if these different questions are in fact, or the different declarations are in fact the case or not, then given the fact that we didn't, for me anyway, I sort of have to go with what's been said. And if I go with what's been said, then I would approve the variance based on.
Yeah, I'd have to defer to what the applicant, the information the applicant provided us in that regard as well. Do you know? No, I'm basically the same point you guys are.
I'd like to hear one more time from Commissioner Reshma, if I could.
Again, I could go either way with it. Things in the lakes are tough over there. I, the fact that he can turn the staircase and not need a variance at all, I have a little bit of an issue with that.
And what's the hardship? If we approve it, what is the hardship?
The septic, the.
That's the septic for going for forward, but not to the south. Well, no, no, okay, I got you.
That is a hardship of the land, the shape of the property or size of the property.
Yeah, but the stairs turning now, coming down on the side of the property, doesn't impact the septic area.
That's why I was thinking.
Because the health department setbacks work with the staircase. So, that's not a hardship.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking the septic really isn't, because the septic's on the front of the house, and this is on the southeasty side of the house. So, I don't think that the septic really is a hardship on this. If he was trying to go forward and there was.
Coming down on the front, that might be a different story.
That would be a different story.
Even at that, you could turn it sideways, and coming straight down, just come off and go sideways along the porch. And you'd probably still stay out of the septic.
The hardship be the safety then of blocking an egress window?
If that's actually what the building code is on that, and.
Well, it's also pre-existing and non-conforming. So, the stairs that are there, the sets are not gonna make it, which is why they're redoing the stairs.
That's a quick question?
No.
I have to be seated.
We have, I gotta look at that case, I'm destroyed.
If, it seems like most of us have never mind. If we were to disapprove it, would anybody have a problem with disapproving it without prejudice? So, if he changed something else, he wouldn't really need it.
Well, in that case, you would disapprove without prejudice essentially, so he can talk to the.
And come back to it sooner if he needed a little bit or something, or didn't need anything at all.
What would you need in that case?
Well, the only question is with the building people. I think that, and I'm not an architect, you know, or a builder or carpenter. I just go and buy the tape measure ruling that I read. I think there's enough room just to go straight down off of there, and it wouldn't need a variance at all. Not a, certainly not a four-foot variance.
Right. Add to the things we're not sure of. We're not sure if he can, if that would fit without a variance, and we're not sure if someone told him, a builder told him, you can't go straight down off the house because of whatever reason.
I see safety, I do see that.
I mean, I would say it would seem to me inappropriate to make the decision based on the speculation that what he said is inaccurate. Because unless we have confirming, counter confirming information about it, and since we've chose not to continue it, we, I think, have to go on what he said, whether we think or don't think he's accurate, since we didn't take the opportunity to pursue that further. The property itself is non-conforming. I mean, the building as such is non-conforming. So, he's really, I don't know if you'd call that a hardship exactly, but the constriction of the property, the very limited room he has on that side, and the fact that it's non-conforming, and the fact that the current stairs are rotting out, would say that.
Safety measure.
Replacement is needed. It doesn't, maybe marginally increases the non-conforming aspect. I'm not even sure that it does.
So, what would you, so safety, obviously, that would be a hardship for you. Is there another hardship on there?
Yes, for sure.
And the other one is what, the lot size, the weight?
Yeah, the lot size and the safety would be.
So, unique shape of property, you're thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I could be off, but I think, I mean, all the lots are small on.
It's the shores.
But I mean, this is a very narrow lot, which does make it difficult to create any sort of stairways to the side of it.
Mr. Secretary.
I'll sit.
Mr. Reshma. I'm good. You're good? Okay, I'm good too, alright.
Mr. Chair, could you just restate the hardships, just to make sure that I have them correctly?
Mr. Briggs? Well, it was safety and unique shape of property, right?
Pre-existing non-conforming.
And pre-existing non-conforming, so kinda really three? Pre-existing non-conforming, unique shape of property, and that. Okay, so we have a motion.
We have a second.
Yeah, let me read it out one more time, and I'll just say all those in favor. Alright, application Z dash twenty-five dash forty-nine. That's Robert Cahoon slash Caitlin Hill residence, sixty-one South Lake Shore Drive, Brookfield, Connecticut. And that is for remove and build a deck with a revised stair location. Required dimension is ten feet, proposed dimension is six feet. The variance requested would be four feet, and that is article three dot five.